Okay, just a reminder, if you have cell phones with you, and I think I don't have mine with me, turn them silent so they don't disrupt the meeting, and if my cellphone goes off, I apologize in advance. I think it's in my car. So first, I'm going to call the meeting to order. It is seven o'clock, and we like to start on time so that you folks can get home at a reasonable hour. And first, I'd like to ask that you join me in pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So I want to welcome all of you this evening. Thank you all for coming. I know there's different issues while you're here, and we're glad to see you here. We're glad to hear what you have to say. And we'll be talking with our sheriff very shortly, and welcome Sheriff Dwyer. And she's not here to keep everybody in line, believe me. No, we have Craig for that. So first order, I'd like to make some introductions. I'm Lisa Whalen, and I'm the mayor. And to my left are council members Kathleen Refkin, Peter Vickery, Claudia Lacy, and Brian Govan. And then on the end, we have our city engineer Allison Felsky, and we have Gary Peters, who is our public work superintendent, our director. What's your official title these days?
Public director.
Thank you, okay. I got that one right. And then to my right, we have Jasper Krugel, and he is the city administrator. And Brian Graham is our finance director. David Abel is our community development director. And then we have our chief of police, Craig Skorres. I keep wanting to say Paul Falls, and I have to. You know, it's new training. So he's only been our chief for a couple of months. So but that's everybody. I think we have a couple people remotely.
Yes, the city clerk, Anne Myroff, is remote.
Okay.
And then our city attorney, I forget his name, he's filling in for Sarah.
Sarah, okay, with Kennedy. Josh, thank you. All right, so next on the agenda is approval of the agenda. Is there a motion? Anything we need to add or change? Hearing none. Is there a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
Allo.
Thank you, Ms. Lacy. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Vickery. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes, five oh. So we have several presenting, special presentations this evening. And again, our first presentation is from Hennepin County Sheriff, Duana Witt. And again, thank you for joining us.
I'm a little boring, everybody, that I think I'm absolutely hilarious. My family doesn't think so, but I don't do boring. So just bear with me. But again, thank you for your time. Who's my clicker?
Yep.
Okay, remember I told you my weakness is PowerPoint?
Yeah.
You might have to figure it out on your own a little bit.
Yeah, we're all right.
No, just kidding. Okay, well, thank you all. I'm Duana Witt, Hennepin County Sheriff. I was elected into office in 2022, taken office in January of 2023. It has been my goal to make sure that I get out to all of our city council meetings throughout the county. Is that something that's really important to me? But more importantly, getting to know me in this small amount of time is something, again, that's very important. But then also to help her understand maybe some of the decisions that I've made in regards to Hennepin County Sheriff's Office and public safety as a whole. So let's go to the overview. Next one, please. Thank you. So again, my background, telling you about my background challenges that we're seeing in law enforcement, and then the strategic priorities by, you did leave some pamphlets for the 2025 strategic priorities for the Hennepin County Sheriff's Office, as well as our 2024 stats are on the back table. Everybody wants to see those later. And then Sheriff's activity in Minnetrista. I'll share some stats that I brought along with that as well. Next slide, please. I hate pictures.
Hey, it's working.
Little bit about me. So I was raised in South Minneapolis, graduate of South High School. I will tell you that I never saw myself in law enforcement. And in fact, I came from a very broken family, a very rough neighborhood, a lot of violence and things like that, which did not provide me a lot of positive interactions or thoughts about law enforcement in general. And I always tell people that because it's important for people to know why it's so important for me to bridge the gap that's between some communities and then policing. That's something that I had to learn along the way in my life. But before entering law enforcement, I was a little bit confused. My first degree is actually chemical dependency family therapy. So I worked nonprofits with our mental health and chemically challenged families for quite some time, Pillsbury Neighborhood Services, and Wudham Lynn Family Services. Part of why I'm telling you that is because that was my goal then. My goal now is always to be who me and my community or my siblings needed to see. And right now, we have a big problem with chemical and mental health in all communities. But to go a little bit further, people say, well, how is it that you had that background and you ended up in law enforcement? Well, I'm gonna tell you, be careful you take your tours, all of you. Because I started with a tour of the jail, and now here I am 25 years later, serving my sentence. But starting off my career as a detention deputy at the Hennepin County Jail. And then in 2004, I went to Dakota County Sheriff's Office. I was a licensed deputy there for 16 years, being the first woman to reach the rank of captain at that department. But a lot of things that I learned at Dakota County, and which I think is very prevalent when we're talking about Minnetrista, is that there was a lot more rural parts in Dakota County than there is Hennepin County. So I learned the importance of having those connections, no matter how big or how small a community is, importance of making sure that you have relationships and just embracing working together because that's so important, again, no matter how big or small a city or a township is. But through my career there, I've done everything from deputy to detective to sergeant, captain, anything I can get my hands on. I'm a busybody. But my best part of my entire career was being a school resource officer, something that I have great passion for, is working with our young people and trying, again, be who I needed to see and making sure that our kids have good role models. 2019, I was asked to come back to Hennepin County Sheriff's Office in the position of a major and overseeing the courts in jail. I actually turned the job down three times before I accepted it. I did. I was very happy at Dakota. But you know, it was one of the best decisions that I made, taking over the jail. We, Hennepin County Sheriff's Office, has the largest jail in the state, the most populated jail in the state, by far the busiest sheriff's office in the state. And so in 2019, one of the things you should know about me, Mother Nature hates me, and so does Father Time. Told you I was funny, right? But anyhow, you know, when we think about everything that has occurred in Hennepin County between 2019 and today, we've been through a lot. And be the one who oversaw the jails and courts. When I say courts, thinking about like, we've had the biggest trials in history here. And I was the one who oversaw security and things like that through that process when we talk about COVID. Having the largest jail, knowing that we did not have a single person that died from COVID in our facility. We actually became the national example for other sheriff's offices even larger than ours as to what are we doing there to keep the people that are in our custody safe? So next slide, I believe. Sorry. A little bit about the sheriff's office. You might have heard in the news, nationally, it's a problem recruiting everywhere. Right now, we are at about 840 full-time employees and 60 part-time employees. Might have also saw in the news that where there was some license order issued by the DOC because of our population of people in our facility, and our staffing was not where it should be. We are still under that CLO order. But I will tell you now, I'm happy to say that we have more detention deputies at the Hennepin County Sheriff's Office than we've had in the history. But one of the things we are trying to, that I'm trying to talk to our commissioners about is what we used to do five years ago no longer works today. And that doesn't matter if you're corrections or if you're licensed. The job is very different. So one of the things I'm talking about are those approved numbers that have been the same approved numbers for at least 10 years are no longer sufficient to deal with the capacity and the population and the issues that we're seeing in our jails. As of today, I would say that as far as our licensed deputies, we're about less than 10 short, which is phenomenal. But again, the job is different. It's more tasking. And so there are a lot of conversations that I'm having with our commissioners as far as what can we do to make sure that public safety is a priority in Hennepin County? And not to just be reactive, but to be preventative, which means we need to be places everywhere, all the time. And again, it doesn't matter to me how big or small a city or a township is. The statutory mandate of the sheriff is to keep peace within the entire county. So right now, we do have six bureaus, investigations, our administration services, court and field services, detention, and public safety services, and lastly, public affairs. I actually had to go to the legislature to get approval to add the Public Affairs Bureau. You know, when people asked me when I was running, what do we need to do better? Again, we need to get law enforcement in places where we can be proactive, so the relationships are already there. So people know who's owning what business, who lives in what homes and things like that. So public, when I think about community engagement and public affairs, something that was non-negotiable for me is to go backwards. And so that was very important, adding that aspect. Next slide, please. So our current challenges. I can tell you, the law enforcement pipeline, it is getting better. I also am a professor at Inver Hills Community College. I teach American Corrections and Juvenile Justice. I can tell you, at one point in the last five years, my class sizes were less than 10. The last two semesters, I've been close to 30. So we are seeing, from my point of view, the pendulum swinging back and more people becoming more interested in law enforcement because that was a real concern, is who are going to do these jobs, because the interest went very low for a while there. And then when we talk about the, if there's not enough officers to respond to urgent calls, which you probably hear a lot in Minneapolis, we lose community connections. I will tell you that I have been asked and pressed about, okay, how many, how much resources am I putting into Minneapolis? I will tell you, I've been very creative. We've done, I will get to some of that stuff later in the PowerPoint. We have been helping quite a bit in there because we can't afford to let Minneapolis go. But I have never said no to any other community. We figure it out. And so when the help call comes, again, it's my job, my statutory mandate, to make sure that I provide public safety in every corner of Hennepin County there is. So we're making it work. I will say that I'm blessed to have people that still love to do the job and hanging in there with me, which I think is a good thing. Either that, or they need to have something checked. But then when I go talking about building trust, again, being proactive instead of reactive, which is quite important, we'll go to our next slide. Oh, well, actually, sorry. Stay here. Go back. Yeah, making sure you're listening. Okay, no, just kidding. But you know, we've been hearing a lot, decrease in crime. I can tell you, the community people that I've been talking to are so tired of hearing about decreasing crime because we all know that the intensity of the crimes that are being committed have skyrocketed. And so what I mean by that is, you know, anybody ever hear that analogy starts with a candy bar, then a bike, and something bigger, and you don't do anything? Well, now we're seeing the bigger things happen, and sometimes not a lot of smaller crimes are happening. And so, you know, again, with my mandate, it is, we are out there every day figuring it out, trying to be everywhere that we can to make sure that we are holding people accountable. That is the job. That's the oath that we took, and that's what we will continue to do. But that's where I'm getting with the lack of consequences and placement options for juveniles. That is a problem for us. I will tell you, my detectives, deputies are a lot of times very frustrated with seeing some of the same people reoffend, and our younger people. And then we also know that the challenges of the jail. Tell people all the time, largest jail, most populated jail. What you see in the communities is what you will see in jail in terms of mental health, physical health, and things like that. And so when we're having those challenges in our community, bet you about a dollar that you're going to see them kind of things in the jail. Now we can go to the next slide. Thank you. So priorities, violent crime reduction, opioid overdose prevention, programming, adult theft reduction, recruitment and retention, and community outreach. We'll go and talk about each one of those. If you want to click me one more slide, please. Am I talking too fast?
No.
All right. But next slide. So violent crime reduction has to be a priority. If we have people that don't feel safe to work or live or visit our neighborhoods, we are in big trouble. It affects everything else that we do. So when I talk about the, Hennepin County had the all-time record of number of homicides in 2021. That was two years before I took office, by the way. Violent crime had to be a top priority. Most violent crimes decreased in 2023 and 2024. Homicides are still nearly double what they were 10 years ago. For example, in our jail, the most population, the largest populated jail, I will tell you, our top three reasons that we're holding people, all felonies, are typically homicide, assault, felony assault, criminal sexual conduct are the three top. It's between 85, 90% of people at any given time in our facility is there for violent felony crimes. We have less than 2% of people at any given time held in our facility for misdemeanors. So again, times have changed. Once upon a time, we had a high number of people that were being held on misdemeanors. That is no longer the case. We have people being held for serious violent offenses. But we know, when I'm talking about being proactive, that while law enforcement has boundaries, we have rules to follow, we have statutes to follow, while criminals do not. And so again, going back to being preventative and making sure that we are everywhere that we can be to deter those type of behaviors is, again, why violent crime reduction has to be a priority. In 2024, our violent offender task force, Southwest Hennepin Drug Task Force, and our West Metro Drug Task Force seized over 17 pounds of powdered fentanyl, opened 1,580 felony cases, and made 256 felony arrests. If we can go to the next slide, which brings me to the opioid overdose prevention. I have an initiative at the Hennepin County Sheriff's Office. It's called Focus on Fentanyl. That Focus on Fentanyl initiative came after a mother came to me in tears about her 17-year-old boy overdosing on fentanyl when he thought he was taking Adderall. This mother talked about how she felt like no one was listening, that people would call her son a junkie when what she had was a kid who was an athlete who had injured and got sucked into using drugs to make him feel better. But then that wasn't enough. Talking to another mother who lost her 15-year-old daughter to fentanyl overdose. And what will always stick with me with that mother is when she said she called dispatch, and they asked her if she had Narcan, if she didn't know what Narcan was. And so this mother will forever think, because she had possibly saved her 15-year-old daughter. So when I talk about overdose, opioid overdose prevention and focus on fentanyl, we have an educational piece. We have an enforcement piece. We have an informational piece. And you know, educating the public about those things, so I don't have another mother who has to think like that ever again. What I can tell you too is currently, if you haven't heard of HIDA, it's High Intensity Drug Trafficking Area. I am the co-chair for the North Central HIDA, which includes Minnesota and Wisconsin. I will tell you that Minnesota is now listed as a corridor for drug trafficking, and human trafficking isn't too far behind it. So again, when we're talking about the fentanyl initiative and opioid overdose prevention, that is something that, again, it can't just be the enforcement piece. There has to be an educational piece. There has to be community engagement. We are one of the only public safety agencies that actually go out into the community, which we offer here to, to teach community how to use Narcan. Again, I will never forget that mom, and I will never forget how she feels. I can never imagine that if she would have only known. Education has to be a piece of what we do. Next slide, programming. So some people ask, why am I putting programs in the jail? Well, we know that studies have been done. The more programs you have in a jail, the less assaults you have, whether it's inmate on inmate or inmate on staff. The people in our facility, and I should say, the Hennepin County Jail is a pre-trial facility, meaning people, about 80% of the people that go into a jail go back into their communities. This is before the term revolving door became a popular term. It's a pre-trial facility, meaning if they're not sentenced yet, they can, they're up for bail or released by some other means of the judicial system. So what we did is we added, well, as the major in 2019, I noticed that the only kind of education that we offered to, again, the largest populated jail, was education for, educational programs for people between the ages of 18 and 21, and they had to be a part of the Minneapolis Public School District. That made no sense to me. So we added a program. It's called HOPE, Helping Others by Providing Education, where now if somebody doesn't have a GED or diploma, we offer educational incentives to everyone. I say jail time should not be wasted time. Because at the end of the day, when those adults go back home, they're going home to kids, they're going home to wives or husbands. We have to think about the whole family as a whole. Jail time should not be wasted time. Glad to say that we've had quite a few graduates from our programs. It was not a part of my budget, but like I said, it had to be created where I had to hire a full-time teacher to do this job. Could use a couple more. You got to start somewhere. The other thing that we added on to the HOPE program are trade unions who wanted to come in and treat, teach trades and things like that. Again, I don't know who's going to take us up on these resources, but I know the wrong thing to do is not to do anything. And so just hope that somebody at some point will grab onto that and do something better with their lives. Next slide. So you might have heard about this thing about adult theft in Hennepin County. I know that Sheriff Fletcher likes to talk about our stats compared to Ramsey County stats quite a bit. But when I think about the family unit, somebody loses a car, don't lose their car, gets their car stolen, how does that affect the family unit? And the amount of time it takes to recover vehicles, and then they're paying on top of that. Adding an adult theft unit was something that was very important because it affects so many facets of the family life. One of the things I can say is just putting out that unit and being able to get experienced detectives from other jurisdictions to be a part of this initiative has been great. They started in January of 2024. I can tell you, last year, our recovery numbers were a little bit over 4 million in vehicles. And now we have started partnering with some other agencies. They've caught on to this and liked it. And so sometimes we'll go do initiatives in other areas, so it's growing. And until we have a steep decline in our, these cars that are being stolen or carjacked, that initiative, that priority has to stand. I will say that a large amount of them are being committed by juveniles. And all last fall and this winter, I traveled to the state Capitol to discuss initiatives that can improve youth interventions and placement options in the metro area, specifically here in Hennepin County. Next paragraph, recruitment and retention. I kind of talked about that a little bit. It had to be initiative. We cannot continue to put ourselves in the position where we're just responding. Law enforcement is just one action of what we do. We need to make sure that we are truly about public safety, prevention, intervention, enforcement. That spells pie, by the way. And if we can go to the next slide, please. And then when we talk about community outreach, I will tell you that that's the best part about my job. I will tell you, my assistants, when she sees me kind of in a grumpy mood, she tells me to leave because she knows when I'm out in the community with my people, then I'm good. That's my, that's my filler up, right? But community outreach is something that's very important to me. No agency, no law enforcement agency can do this work without working with communities. And you know, I would like to offer this to you all. When you have community events, we're common. We just need to know where they are. I want to be everywhere. And so I please offer that. When you're having community events, leave, come out to Minnetrista. It's very important to me. So next slide. I was glad, because you know what my talking point said, Champlin. I'm like, please don't have Champlin up there. But this, some of the stats that we've had in comparison to quarter one of 2024 and quarter one 2025 were the patrol hours that we've had logged in Minnetrista. And then the RFIs, that's for request for information. So we have an intelligence, a criminal analysis group that sometimes information comes, intel comes into them from our various law enforcement agencies, and they help them kind of put their cases together. So that's what the RFIs are. And dispatch events, as you know, we have, we dispatch for the area, and the number of calls that they've got from this area, quarter one 2024, compared to 2025. So, and then jail bookings. With that being said, is there another slide? Thank you. I want to give you all the time to ask me any questions. You know, I'd never go and figure that I know what people want to hear. Again, being this was my first time, I just wanted to kind of give like a big overhaul of just high level of what we're doing. And I would really take, like to take any questions if you have them or if we have the time there.
Will take a few minutes. Can you, you talked a little bit about Narcan. Is that available to the public? And if somebody wanted to get it, is it free? Do they pay for it? And what is the lifespan of Narcan?
So I will tell you, it's free. We come out and we actually teach it because we, you know, there's some places that do a virtual deal. That's, it's more important for me to make sure we have people that come out to communities and they teach it. They give you Narcan for free. No, it's no, it's not a lifespan on it. The only thing that we worry about is if it gets too cold, you know, like leaving it in your car or something like that. But we do provide all the training. We do it for free. We come to any community if asked, and we would gladly do that here as well.
When you said that the jails have 80% of the murderers, homicides, those, and not as many people with misdemeanors, is that because they're not being charged and they're just being let go? Or is it just completely being taken over by the more violent crimes?
It's being taken over more by violent crimes, you know. Again, so when I was the major in 2019 and I came here, we had way too many people being held on misdemeanors. And when I say misdemeanors, it would be something like fare evasion on the train or trespassing or things like that. When we have people that are being held on felony, they're typically in custody a lot longer. That's why our stays have went up quite a bit, and our costs have went up quite a bit. But it's not dropping. I would say that we do need some expediency from the rest of our judicial partners to move cases through. I do think that's part of the reason why we're being bottlenecked right now. Something I should have brought up, maybe you seen it in the media, maybe you didn't. But right now, I think we are annexing, that means sending some of our inmates to other jails because of the order that's coming down from the DOC that forces us to decrease our population. But that's costing us hundreds of thousands of dollars to do that. But I will not be a part of a conversation about letting people that are being held on violent offenses go just to keep our jail population now. I, it's my job to make sure I do my part to keep our communities safe. And while it costs a lot, I'm not going to put a price on the safety that our communities deserve. And I hope that answered your question.
Yes, thank you.
Has the county been proactive in giving you funding that you need, or how is that?
You said the F-word. You know, county has been good with, with the funding. But as I said before, things have been stagnant for a while, and the job is just very much different than what it was before. The cost to do business in terms of public safety is very expensive. We are having those talks right now with expected budget cuts. And I'm going to tell you, I am very worried about that because public safety should never be something that's negotiated. And so I believe that we have our first budget talks with our county administrator and commissioners at the last week of July. But I'm going to be honest, I'm worried about where these cuts are going to come from. We are not in a place where we can take public safety in Hennepin County lightly.
Sheriff Witt, first of all, thank you so much for being a public servant. God bless you. Thank you. You can see the passion that you have for your job, your many roles that you've played. Do you, I lived in Minneapolis and St. Paul for 10 years, and I felt like incredibly safe and blessed and fortunate to live there. I don't feel that way now. I'm a little afraid to go downtown Minneapolis. Do you feel, you know, the whole defund the police? I find that so shocking because I think everyone in this room is so grateful for our wonderful police force and for all of you. Do you feel like that's changed a bit now in Minneapolis? Do you feel, I mean, do the police officers in Minneapolis feel respected by the community? And do you feel safe? And what do you think is your biggest hurdle? I guess I want to ask this question. When some of these violent offenders are charged, do, you know, when it comes before a judge, are they punished accordingly? Or do you feel like? Or do you feel like they're not?
I could tell you, once upon a time, you could kind of tell what somebody was gonna be sentenced to. Now sometimes there's no rhyme or reason to it. Um, again, and when I'm talking to my staff who feel like deflated sometimes by seeing some of the same people, it makes it very hard. It's like, how do you, I guess maybe that should have been one of the difficulties is how do you keep people who have passion to do this work? Um, wanna truly keep people safe? How do you keep that morale up? It makes it very difficult sometimes. But as far as like um, in Minneapolis, I will tell you, you know, I grew up in Minneapolis. So for me, it's like some of the things seeing is normal. Um, and, but it should not be normal. Um, again, I said earlier, it's like, yeah, we, we see numbers are going down, but the intensity of crimes are going up very sharp. But um, I will tell you that I actually moved back to Minneapolis um, in Loring Park uh, where there's a lot of things going on there. And you know, some people even police be like, what are you doing? Well, you know, you can't be afraid of the communities that you swear to protect and serve. You have to be a part of it. Um, and you know, I've never been one to sit around and complain. It's like, okay, what are the solutions, right? It's getting better. And that's so hard for, if, if you're, if that's not your norm, it's hard for people to see that. But I will tell you, it is getting better. The collaborations that we have worked with um, Minneapolis Police Department have been quite extensive. But you know, something else I don't shy away from, as I told you, as that small child, I seen what bad policing is. So I never, I never ignore the fact that sometimes there are people that make us all look bad. And so we gotta do a better job of making sure that those type of people do not exist because they are the ones that are hurting the relationships. Um, and then like a lot of things, it's the negative people that are the loudest. I can tell you, I uh, challenged some of the Minneapolis Rotary Groups. It's like, you know, if I go to the suburbs, I see all these signs, we support police. I have not seen one in Minneapolis. But they need to know that, that people do support them, but because of negative people are just so loud. And then when we're talking about elected officials too, it's like even they're just saying, you know, that yes, we support you. And then maybe speaking up to some of the nonsense that we hear for people who believe that um, that this profession should be defunded or we don't need it. I don't know what planet they're leaving, moving on. But we do need policing. We need good policing. We need good people to do this job. And um, it's unfortunate that uh, the ones, the majority who are in this business for the right reasons and doing a good job, don't get the credit that they deserve. Um, and so again, the challenge is sometimes is how do you keep people interested and how do you keep that morale up when all you hear is the negative naysayers that are constantly going at you? I have long answers too.
Well, good thing you speak fast.
Thank you so much Sheriff for coming out to our far-flung uh, corner of the county. It was really uh, your presentation was really informative. Um, I saw one slide you mentioned about the pipeline for uh, future law enforcement. Is the uh, what kind of stuff is the county doing, if anything, to kind of help get young people interested in careers in law enforcement?
Well, no, thank you for that question. So I have right now, I think twenty-one interns. Working with our interns, paid interns to get them used to the culture of Hennepin County Sheriff's Office, um, getting to see all the aspects of the Sheriff's Office. So that's one of the things that I needed board approval uh, for that to happen. So I was very grateful that we've done that. Again, hoping that that does not go away because that is, that is a very valuable tool. Um, we can show some people that this is a career you want and we might show some of these young people, you don't want this career, you know? But at least they have that, that, that experience. Um, so that's one of the things that we're doing. You know, when it came to um, recruiting for the jail um, for our detention deputies who are not licensed police officers, but that's also one of the pipelines to get people licensed. Uh, one of the barriers that I had was that before they would even get to us, um, they, people were turned away from our human resources. And it's like, wait a minute, people take the time to go through that very long application process. They must think that they're qualified to do this job, right? Um, and so after looking into some of that, finding out that um, people maybe have like, it's, it's not black and white as far as what their experience is. So now we started a program where we call the um, Hennepin County Detention Deputy Training Program. Meaning we bring them in as trainees, we get them to where they need to be so that we can then hire them as a permanent employee for detention deputies. Um, and again, we've seen a lot of success with that. We will be hosting our annual um, swearing in ceremony in September. And I don't know how we're gonna get everybody in that building, but we've been having some, a lot of success. I shouldn't say some, a lot of success. But it's having those communications. And then I always tell people, in terms of female, we're part of the Thirty by Thirty Initiative. That means having thirty percent of your um, workforce um, be women by 2030. It's a national movement that's going on. So being a part of that uh, has been something that's been really important, but just being in all those places. I tell people, if you can't see her, you can't be her. If you can't see it, you can't be it. So making sure that we're not just, when I say we can't just be looked at as law enforcement, we truly gotta be public safety, that means, like I said, we have to be everywhere. You never know when you're gonna inspire somebody, whether it's a kid or somebody looking for a second or third career. You have to have that communication and those interactions. It's indirect recruiting. You know, we can't just focus on direct recruiting. It has to be that indirect recruiting. So I, just to add to this, and this is where it makes me uncomfortable. I'm not, I'm, I don't like compliments. I just do what I gotta do, right? But when a deputy came to me one day and he kind of turns his head sideways and he goes, you're the real deal. I'm like, so what's that supposed to mean? But you know, being approachable, asking people how are they doing, asking how they doing, all of those basic human qualities that we have. It doesn't get erased because you have a badge and a gun and a uniform. Just you're good enough. And that's what I tell people, you're good enough. Now how can I help you get that? Thank you.
Well, thank you, Sheriff. We really appreciate you coming out and lots of information, but um, really appreciate and all the work that you do. So thank you very much.
So much.
Thank you.
Thank you all. And again, welcome out and do the Narcan trainees. And when you have community events, please invite us and we would love to come.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Um, so the recognition for service, um, we're gonna have to postpone that because they're not here this evening. Um, so then, then we're gonna quickly, uh, something more important. Ha ha. Our financial update for 2025. It won't be that long.
No, this should be a minute or two. So um, thank you, Madam Mayor and Counsel. So um, the information for our second quarter of 2025, um, probably just summarize the memo um, briefly. Um, our revenues are about at forty-six percent of our budget collection. So during the same time last year, we were at forty-four percent. So finally got most of our tax revenue in for first um, half of the year here. Obviously we get that in um, the two chunks, uh, first and second uh, this time and then in December. Um, the building permit revenue has been doing pretty well still for this year. So I think you saw that. So that's our other biggest piece of um, revenue. And then on the expenditure side, we're about at fifty-two percent year-to-date to our 2025 budgeted expenditures, which in that, you know, last year at this time, we were about at fifty percent in that low fifties. Obviously some things we've paid for the full amounts, like some of our, our insurance and premiums and, and things like that. So really uh, we are tracking pretty well at the mid, mid uh, year point here as far as um, coming in with our revenues, matching expectations and staying within our budget on the expenditure side. So I guess I'll stand for any questions. Otherwise we'll have a more detailed um, at our August work session, looking ahead to 2026 with our, our talking, our initial um, discussions on the 2026 budget, so.
How was water usage for quarter two?
Um, with how wet it's been, it's, I mean, it was, it's pretty, it was almost more comparable to twenty-four than twenty-three and twenty-two. So um, it's something, obviously third quarter is our biggest one. So we'll see where July, August, September take us. But um, it definitely, um, we didn't have too many people with, you know, high use. Sorry. And then in, in total, um, it was more comparable to, to last year than, than a couple, two to three years ago. So, so the revenue probably will be a little down from quarter, quarter from a couple years ago, so.
Any other questions? Otherwise we're gonna do a deeper dive um, in August. So thank you, Brian. So next we have persons to be heard. So we have a couple, um, we have quite a few people signed up. So what I'm gonna offer here is um, if, if the council will um, agree with this, if you could maybe have a couple of people speak uh, for the, because we have some people here from uh, Bayside for the drainage issues, and then we could give you a little more time, and then maybe we could have a little bit of discussion versus everybody getting three minutes and that's it. If you're okay with that, um, if you can kind of have maybe one or two people speak and then, and same with the um, the, the woodland cove people, um, if you could have a couple people speak and then we could have a little bit of um, discussion and some comments, a little bit of back and forth rather than, otherwise we're gonna be here for twenty minutes and you get three minutes each, and you're gonna be here for about twenty minutes and you could also get three minutes each. And then we can go home and you might not have any answers to your questions or concerns. So with that, I'm gonna start with the Bayside um, people first. They come to the podium and then you have to state your name and address for the record.
That was one nine oh five Bayside Lane. Is that, is that better? I am the second house on the right as you come into Bayside Lane. There's one house whose property is higher than mine. It's this house. I brought this uh, video just to kind of set the stage for what I want to talk about.
Okay.
It'll take about two minutes. Go ahead. This is June twenty-fifth. That's the neighbor's water coming to my yard.
Wow.
Now it's coming through my yard.
Hans Bayside, right?
Actually, this is, this is part of Jennings Bay. It's a, it's a point-five acre lot. So it's a, it's a pretty nice long stretch of water that we got here. It's graded toward the south. If you want to move ahead just a little bit farther, maybe a half a minute. Good, good. See that drain there?
Yeah.
Years ago, I, I submerged a, a, pause here for just a minute.
My gosh.
I, I put a uh,
I'm sorry, I can't hear you. Can you speak a little bit closer to the microphone? Thank you.
I'm talking to the screen. This is the far south end of my lot. At the end of it, but at the end of it, I put a, like a French drain underground, about a three thousand gallon drain to hopefully hold water and let it disperse underground over a, a few weeks after we get rain. These swimming in the basements, for sure.
Yeah.
They live in the house south of me and the second house south of me. And they've been suffering water, water the whole time as well. If you play it now to the end, you'll see just how bad it got.
So this is one rain event?
It was that, it was that one time.
Wow.
Three and a quarter inches over a period of about, uh, maybe fourteen or fifteen hours, I think. About to go over Gina's lawn here. It's coming a little bit later. See that I have a uh, submersible pump in there? When it gets this bad, pumping out to the street. When it gets this bad, and you can stop it right here, you can see now, now. Actually going into Jeanie's, Gina and Terry's yard directly. And uh, that's a lot of water.
It is.
It's a lot of water. In fact, that particular time, I had my uh, submersible pump in, in one of the bucket baskets and ran it for three days straight. And it pumps four gallons a minute, about thirty-seven gallons a day, and it ran for three days. And I told you, I had three thousand, three thousand gallons of, of uh, there's a lot of water that comes through there. It has nowhere to go except in my system, in Gina's yard, your pool. So uh, let me just tell you a little bit more, more about myself. That area that you saw where the water was running, that was the original driveway that went to the cabin that was on the lake. It was supposed to have been the drainage area, I suspect, when this was put in. It's just, it doesn't have enough water. There's not enough place for it to go. I had no idea how much was there because the last twenty feet of my lot, when I bought it in two thousand and two, was all buckthorn and dead elms and ash trees. And I didn't have any visibility into it until I started clearing out my yard so I could have my whole yard. And uh, we didn't really have any visibility into the issue until we did that, as to how much water was standing. All we had was mosquitoes, a lot of them, standing water. So over time, um, we reclaimed that whole corner and expanded our, our, our yard. And we have, we have a beautiful yard, we love it. But for at least six weeks, every spring and summer, we have this issue of standing water a couple, two, three times. And uh, the solution we had hoped would be able, to be able to tap into a drain that's across the, the dividing line between Jennings Cove and Bayside Lane. There's a drain in the Thorson's yard that I believe is a tw- twenty-inch? Gary, is that right? A twenty-inch?
It's twenty inches, yeah.
Uh, but somehow nobody can determine if I could tap into that.
Okay.
It's about thirty feet. I could do a horizontal bore right out of my catch basin and eliminate all the water that's going to these folks.
So do we know why we, we can't, he can't do that? I mean,
If, if I may, um, so we've had legal look into this and see if we have any easements or if there's any records of, of who owns it. Um, I believe that the city did put it in um, a while back.
We're assuming that we did. We have no record of it, but we're assuming that with the size of pipe, it would, it's the city.
So, but it does hook into our infrastructure. Um, so it go, goes into our storm water system. Uh, but we don't have any records. So we, we technically can't say you can do it. It would have to be uh, permission from that private property owner to be able to.
Even though it's probably, probably our?
So we've, we've had legal counsel look at it and, and that's their determination. Um, you know, there's, yeah, I brought up, you know, is there a prescriptive easement right to this? Because it's been in there. We haven't been using it for our public infrastructure, so that kind of goes out the window. If we were using it to, to, to gather water that, you know, from, from the area more so, then we could maybe go down the prescriptive easement, right? Which, you know, we've done for other things. Uh, so uh, right now, that's, that's what we've got from legal counsel as far as being able to access it. So it's kind of a, a private matter. Um, you know, the pipe from talking to, to Gary is, is fairly large and could probably take on the water that you're talking about.
I've got, that's.
So um, you know, I, 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 Gary said, well, you know, I'd, I'd be petitioning that property owner as hard as he can to, to get access to that.
She, uh, she's not approachable.
Okay.
So is there any other, can he put this water into the city's system some other way?
Well, you've already approved. If I would go from my southeast, southwest corner with a horizontal bore to a bucket right by the curb in the front of my yard.
Yeah.
And then go south under their yard into the storm sewer that's in the southeast corner of their yard. But this is about a uh, twelve to fifteen thousand dollar bill for me.
Is there any possibility that the city could help with that?
I'd like that a lot.
I, I'm sure, I'm just throwing.
When you see how much water went across their yard out of my yard, if we could stop what was coming out of my yard, your problems would be diminished significantly. I don't know if it's half the problem that we had this, this time around or, or what, but.
I don't think we can make a determination. I don't want to put the council on, um, how do you say? Yeah, yeah. You know, I know we talked about it once and there wasn't an appetite to pay for it, but I'm wondering if we could have a partnership or something where maybe it's divided somehow between a property and the city and we use some of our stormwater funds.
So on the other side of the fence is your property?
Yes, so I put in all of our entire property line. Now this is with the sheriff this year was our neighbor. So when we first moved in, so jump in here, um, we got the drain tile along our entire backyard. So it's around here where I don't handle any water. I run it around and I tidy it to by the fence. So any water that could get to that drain and go towards the lake, it can't. But it's blocked. And the city back then had the drain tile on, or a PVC to a catch basin in that corner, a bar lock. our, a PVC to a catch basin in that corner, a bar lock. To pump water out, but the hole was checked out in his efforts and he didn't even have built it. And they put in a PVC tie into the city system. That's why it's an easy access because it's already, there's already words over with this PVC pipe, that PVC wall this winter.
Okay.
Now we have pumping water above 80% of the wall ground along the top water. And the 20% may come from our lower level. And that's added now.
Anything you could do to help with this?
So it's your home, it's your home, it's your home. Is there just the three, there's a fourth one too?
There's actually the one that's at the top. They're, like to participate if there was some way they could. But going from their backyard to their, their drain, that's, that'd be a long, long shoot.
So let's just see if, if there's five entities involved, four homeowners and the city, and we split the cost five ways. If it's 15 or-
I don't, go ahead.
I mean, I'm just-
Yeah, go ahead.
925 Bayside Lane. So yeah. So I think you can sense our frustration.
Right.
I'm going to go out the house in 2000. It was approved. Our house was built too low. We've been pumping water since the inception. We, we spent thousands of dollars on this issue. Cheryl Fisher's a mayor. She approved the PVC pipe. Now, right now, it doesn't pump, so it's urgent. Because come winter, water has nowhere to go and we're going to flood our basement. So, you know, there's two solutions. I think the latter one that Danny said, or be connected to the storm basin on Jennings Cove. But yeah, it gets, we're afraid to leave the house for extended periods of time, go on vacation because our basement will flood when I'm out there. So if you got the water pumping from underneath the ground, plus water coming over, and we've been after this for years, and it's like it's falling on a deaf ear. So I'm glad you're hearing us out because we just can't continue to live this way. And, and, you know, we want a lot of financial help because we spent thousands of dollars already. I can't, you can probably, the price tag you put in, just putting that catch basin drain tile in. So, you know, we want our tax dollars at, at her and helping us, you know, because we spent so much money trying to resolve this problem. It's not fixed.
Well, and the thing is, we're, we're replacing pumps every year.
Yeah.
When the pump goes out-
Then you gotta get annoyed, yeah.
-on the inside, when it goes out, I'm replacing pumps.
Right.
Disengagement.
Right.
Like during, during dry periods, it, it runs inside our house.
What I-
Three minutes per day.
What we'd really have to do is-
It'll be 30 seconds it's pumping.
I think this is good because I, I don't think we realized how dramatic it is. I think what we'd want to find out from our engineer or staff, okay, what, what is the solution? Who would do the work? How much would it cost? And then the council can make a decision. I, I'm fully supportive of your ask.
.........................................................
Okay, and-
And I think that the thing here, the guy in- ....................................
And I think we, we just, one of the things we'd have to do is just make sure that our engineer takes a look at it to make sure that if there's an investment from the city's part, that, that it's really going to work. You know, we want to make sure that it would work.
I, I have a question. Who would put in a 20 inch pipe if not the city?
Well, that's what we've been asking.
Well, nobody, but if we don't, when we did it, if there wasn't an easement or a contract and we just did it and let them-
Well, but the neighbor that's non-compliant or doesn't want to help, does she have the right to say no? We, well, that's according to-
Because we'd be going, you'd be going under her property or destroying her-
Oh, she has one-
No, she wouldn't have anything.
She's not even buying one extra neighbor's. She's, she's draining a pool and it goes to a holding pond.
Kenny.
Your pool?
And all are putting the building together.
It would go under her?
Right.
She wouldn't-
It goes straight to a holding pond.
Why does she not want, what is the downside for her?
Protective.
There's no downside. It's not going to want to come on. It's very close to us.
I can interject. She, she said, you know, at first she was saying she owned it. And no, and then, then when Gina was communicating with her, was there already when she purchased it? So the city built it, let's be honest. Nobody else put that thing in there.
She said, excuse me?
It was here.
So the question is, I think Jasper was saying, is, would it be a public project or a private project? And if it's a private project, we would still, my opinion, want our engineer to take a look to make sure that it's going to work if we're going to have a private-public partnership in it. So I think maybe that would be the direction this evening that we could do is, Allison, if you could come back, or Gary, put your heads together and come back at our next meeting telling us what the solution would be. Maybe talk to the neighbors and tell us if it's going to work. I want to make sure it's going to work. They want to make sure it's going to work. It sounds like we can't use that 20 inch pipe. That's too bad. It's very unneighborly. But if we can't, then let's see what other solutions we could come up with and then what the price tag would be, a kind of an approximate with some of the numbers they have. And then bring it back and let's make a decision at that time, if that's possible.
And I have a quick question. Because we have no place to drain our water because we're built too low. It's documented, um, recorded. It was built too low. We can't pump the water to that catch basin any longer. It has to go to the front of our house and then connect in some way, shape or form before winter. Once that freeze was weird, all that water's coming right out. We have nowhere for it to go.
So that's why I'm saying if they could bring it back at our August 4th meeting and then we can make a decision, I would hope, I would think, August, September, October, November. We have three months before freezing, so I would hope something could be done before then. Counsel?
And they're pouring full, full water.
Yeah.
It's under water.
Right.
And you don't want to electrify the experience.
I'm sorry, I have a question for Gary. Gary, the, the neighbor who's not being cooperative with the pipe and it goes into a city pond?
Correct. It flows, it connects into a city catch basin in front of their house, which eventually goes to the pond by Jennings Cove Park, which then flows out eventually to the lake.
I don't really understand.
The pond is, the pond by the park is a city pond, correct?
Correct.
Well, we just tell her she can't do that anywhere.
Exactly.
If, if we did ask the attorney if that is a possible thing and it was denied, said it probably is not something that we can just, you know, shut off and just say if you're not going to allow use of it. But the ultimate solution would be, the easiest solution would be to use that pipe, get these yards, have a drain tile system through those backyards to that catch basin in that backyard and whip the water away. A 20 inch pipe will not overflow. I mean, it-
So to that, can we take out the, their pipe and put in a city one that solves the whole area? Like, say, we're, we're removing your pipe.
I don't think we can because we don't have an easement to see.
We can just take an easement?
No.
Through the whole, like the whole area? Can't we take an easement through the whole area?
Yeah, you have to go through eminent domain to do that if they weren't willing.
Do they know about any of this? Because that's affecting major water.
Unsure. Unsure if they know about it or not.
I'm not sure what they could do about it.
It's, so what I'm gathering-
But do, to do eminent domain would take a lot longer than what these folks need. So that's the other issue. That's, that's a process and it's a long process. And then you have to prove public purpose, which we probably could prove, but it's, it's, and then you have, you still have to pay for the land and still have to pay for the easement.
It would be, it would be, it would be the most cost-effective way to do it would be to go the other route.
Right, no, so-
If there's no trees, there's no obstacles, there's no drain tile. It goes into already that's tied into that first city system in the street, so it's perfect.
Right.
So one more question, sorry. Can we get an easement through their three properties and run a pipe next to the one that's already there?
The pipe that's-
There's a lot of train lines down there.
Yeah. They, they would have to agree to the easements, but we wouldn't be able to gain access to where that pipe is because we'd have to go on that property owner who doesn't seem to be willing to gain, let us gain access through an easement.
Have we made an effort to contact this neighbor?
Yes.
We have. Gary has?
Yeah, through the train. What, just like you're asking quickly, what are the, so you're looking at your house, Danny, your house. So 865, 905 yours, 925 and 945?
945.
So all four of you?
Well, it's pretty new to the area.
965, so-
If you grab the water after Danny's house, we collect all of it above the wall ground, bring it to the street. But that's probably 80% of the town floor. That's going to call that water. And it's going to dry everything off and bring that water all to the way where it's supposed to go.
So I think the, what I'm going to recommend is that our engineer and Gary work with the residents to make sure that whatever solution you want to bring forth on the 4th will work, number one, in kind of at least a approximate cost. And then we can decide on, on the city's participation. Does that sound like a good-
The city participates.
We'll, we'll decide that. I just want to, I'd like to offer that we participate. Again, we'll, we'll talk about that on the 4th, but I would want to make sure that if it is a partnership, that whatever we participate in, that it's actually going to work. So, all right, that's the plan? All right. Thank you. All right. So next we have people here from Woodland Cove and I, Allison, is that, do you want to, who's going to be?
Gina.
Okay.
Hi, my name is Jeff Martino. I work, I, I live in Orno, but I'm working and have been working for quite some time in Woodland Cove, the woods at Halsted's Bay, the Cove, and most recently, the meadows at Halsted's Bay. Recently, I was contacted by the homeowners specifically along Wolfberry last Thursday night, that road had been proposed in the Three Rivers Park property to access the proposed wellhouse, which caused us to have a meeting today, them to have a number of different conversations and, and myself as a representative with Stonegate and Ganya Homes to have a discussion with the owners and the developers of the meadows at Halsted's Bay. Quite frankly, I'm recommending or hoping that the council directs staff to push the pause button on the, the building and the park access and create some dialogue, in-depth dialogue within staff with these homeowners and also Stonegate Builders and Ganya and the developer. We've got quite a holdings there as a company, number one, and a great neighborhood that we have really, we're really proud of. And, and we have these homeowners that I've become very close to that have built substantial homes and having a benefit of the Three Rivers Park behind them and obviously has been a draw for them and a draw for the neighborhood. So that's why I'm here today is to support the homeowners and the neighbors and also be an advocate for Ganya Homes and Stonegate Builders.
Thank you, Jeff. So I should, I just want to make a couple of comments. You can sit down if you want. Thank you. So our staff has been talking with Tyler?
Tyler Winkus.
Tyler Winkus. And so what staff would like to do is, so first of all, we're not going to put a hold on, on this project because it has to go forward. We're waiting for the, it's gone out for bid, but we couldn't make some adjustments. So we're not adverse to doing that. And staff has been trying to get ahold of this Tyler person and hopefully have a meeting with you folks as well as Tyler, as well as our staff, to come up with some alternatives. I understand that there might be an alternative for the road. Do you have that? Could you bring that up?
Yeah. And I point out clarity, I did talk to Tyler this morning and I think we had a good conversation. And, you know, I think he's going to circle back either tonight or tomorrow. And, and I think the idea is that we can all get together and look at the plans and maybe come up with, with what works for the group. And I can pull up, there's, originally, the original ingress egress point was in a different location. I can pull that up. And, you know, we can easily, just I'm telling city council, we can easily pivot to that if we need to. So just, it's not a be all end all that that road will go through. But that's what, you know, we started talking to Ganya back in September of last year about this, and that's what we proceeded with. But we can pivot. There is some time. So I'll try to advance-
Not on the building, but on the road. So the building is going to go up one way or the other. But the road might, we can maybe pivot on that.
If you can see this, this was something we just kind of put together quickly, or Gary put together quickly. So the road that I think you guys are, have issue with is the one on the right to the, to the north a little bit here. The other one was going through where the, where the trail connects to Wolfberry and kind of goes along there. We ruled this one out originally because of the size of the, the vehicles that might be going on there, but we, we changed some things with how the plant operates and now those larger trucks won't need to go through there. So that, that could be a feasible location. So we've talked to Tyler about this. Hopefully we can get together really soon and, and work some of these things out.
So I, I thought maybe that might help a little bit. I know some of you also had some questions regarding some of the public meetings that we've had. How come you didn't know? So first of all, just for clarification, the city council is not required to hold a public hearing. Now, there's, there's a difference and I want to clarify that just briefly. A public hearing is when we post, we have certain posting requirements and we say, okay, there's a public hearing. You come into city hall, you, you are allowed to speak for or against something. But when we do a project like this, this is a necessary, must-have project that the city has to do. And so we are not required to hold a public hearing. We have had many, many public meetings regarding this issue. We have been studying this and working on this for over three years. And we have had numerous meetings regarding this. Not to mention, we've also held two town hall meetings where all the residents in Woodland Cove have been invited. And recently, our most recent one was on April 14th, I believe, where we invited the residents in Woodland Cove to come and talk to us regarding our water treatment plant and our, our water rates. We had 10 people, 10 people come to that meeting. We also post on our website information and we also post on, if you look at your water bill and your utility bill, we have information on the back of that. So we're trying to reach out. We're trying to be transparent. We're trying to get information out to, to our residents when it pertains to water or water treatment. Having said that, we've put out this, we, the plans and specifications have been done. We've paid a lot of money for that, over a million dollars. And they're out for bid and we'll be opening those bids on August 4th, how, 7th, I'm sorry, yes, 7th. So if those bids come back fairly decent, what we expect, we will be awarding that contract at our second meeting in August. With that said, there's still a few tweaks that we can do. I know previous to the meeting, we talked about this berm. The berm, I don't believe is on city property, this large berm that I believe one of the young ladies is talking about. But we could add to it if the owner of that berm is acceptable.
We do own it.
That is on our property, huh?
It is.
It's the one between where the pickleball court and the new water treatment plant.
Okay, then, then it's ours. Yeah, I'm sorry. We can add to that berm. If that's an option, we can look at that to add more trees and to kind of screen it a little bit better. In fact, adding to the berm might actually reduce our costs if we don't have to haul all of that soil away. Those are things that we can look at. The building's going to be there. It's going to be in that location. I'm not going to mince words. I'm not going to tell you something that's not true. But we can try and screen it a little bit better too, if that's something that will be a, that you might like. So with that, if anybody else wishes to speak at this time, you're welcome to do so. I'll give you a few minutes.
Are we going to have a question answered?
Sure. Yes. So Jasper's trying to set up that meeting and he's trying to set it up with this, with Tyler as well as with residents. And then he also suggested maybe with our engineering?
Yeah, absolutely. So I know Tyler's on vacation right now, so I appreciate him reaching out to me today. So I would work through him and if there's a conglomerate of people from the neighborhood that can help guide where this goes, I think be part of that. But I think we, we need to try to do it as soon as we can.
Mister, I'm not sure what your name is. You can come forward. Yes.
My name is David Carl. I lived at, I live at 4622 Wolfberry Court with my wife. And first of all, thank you. We, we really hoped to have- time, and prior to purchasing the lots, we did call a minute, talk to Park Reserve, we talked to Gagne Homes, we called the city, is there anything planned in the park? We want to buy that lot, but we don't want to have something developed behind us. And every time, answer came back, no. So we bought the lot, we built the homes, and now we saw Thursday night, just ninety-six hours ago, that this plan was in place. That got us all looking and looking deeper and deeper. So we really appreciate the fact that you're willing to take a look at the Woodbury Curve option. I went down in and measured it all out, there's lots of room. I assure you, there's lots of room. The berm is good news too, we really appreciate that. Thank you. And I, we really appreciate Gagne and Stonegate Builders for their support with us on, and, you know, being a good partner. The one question I have on the facility, we get it, you're going to build it, it's needed, not a discussion. The parking lot, the way it is right now, is in front of it, and I know you've got the storage tanks behind it, so you can't put it there. Is it too late to just simply lip flop it? Make it a mirror image based in the road versus us? Wouldn't change the building at all.
Well, I think that there was a reason for having it the way it was.
If I can give a little history on the whole driveway situation, it might help clarify things. Originally, when we were looking at the design of this plant, it was not going to go here, it was going to a different location, ended up with bad aqua first, we needed to put it here. The driveway was going to go off a Wolfberry curve, but at that time, when the plant was designed, it was going to use one-ton chlorine cylinders, which is very common in a water treatment plant. Arch currently uses a smaller one-fifty size, the one-ton was going to be used because you wanted to change him out so much. With that, it comes in a bigger, larger truck, and we did not want, first off, that large of a truck, we did not want chemicals at all going through the neighborhood. That was what they were trying to eliminate. That's why this road was developed, because it was a larger forty-foot semi, basically, that would be coming in with these tanks. Thus, the larger drive could come in, we need to have that area back into the delivery area and then drive out. With the changing of the size of the plant, shrinking it down, just compact a little more, we got away from the one-ton cylinders, back to the smaller one-fifties, which is basically like your guess, your grill size, you know, probably six feet tall, five feet tall size, so we're back to those, so it comes in a smaller delivery truck. Not, it's not a semi, it's a box truck, it's not like a UPS truck, it's slightly bigger than that. And yes, we could bring that through the neighborhood, but again, it's delivering chemicals, we kind of like to keep it out there, that's why we just kind of left the driveway where it was coming into that way. It's, you know, it's, you know, was, it seemed like the best option at the time. We could not do Highway seven, just, you know, just let you know, because there is a big coalition right now, safety coalition, they're trying to eliminate, make it safer, they don't want any new entrances off Highway seven, can understand that, we did pursue that route. We have a temporary construction easement, so we're not getting that construction traffic through there, through your neighborhood, so we'll be using that interim. And the, the fact that we chose this area and the, the size of the plant, the way it sits, we did try different alignments with the parking lots and however they could come in, this just made the most sense to have vehicles come in. With a different truck, I'm not certain if we, you know, and it's a good question, I can look at, we may be able to shrink down the size of that parking lot a little bit with a smaller truck coming in, but there's still need to access coming in. And if they come in from Wolfberry, we need to have to redesign that, to have a little hammerhead for them to back into and drive in and out of. Can it be done? Yes. Is it a shorter distance? Yes. We'll have to add some new engineering sheets to it to add that in. There's sixty-five feet, I just looked at sixty-five feet of right of way through there, so we have plenty of room. There is, I, I thought it was a fire hydrant, it's a light pole that would have to be relocated, not a, not a big deal, we can do it that way. The issue would be the pickleball court would be hampered, we'd have to make some kind of a temporary entrance to that for everybody, but we could, you know, sneak by there. The, the cost probably in the long run might be a little cheaper, it could be a wash until we find out, but we can explore that if that's the sole wish of you guys. So, but just to give you a little history of why that driveway was placed there, that area that we have there is an easement already through there with the city and Met Council. We have our gravity sewer main, sanitary sewer that runs through there, so that's collecting all the sewage from your homes going through there, along with two twenty-four-inch force mains for the Met Council. That's a, that easement, and that's why that's open through there. We do mow it twice a year, it's pretty wet in the one area, so we have a hard time, but we do open that and maintain it. We do have to have a contractor come in every four years and clean that line, section line for us, so we try to maintain that. This would actually make it a lot easier to clean that too, but we can make it through, you know, we can go that way. If, you know, if it's feasible to, to keep it where it is and add to the berm, add some trees here or there, we can certainly do that, so.
So I think.
That's kind of the history behind the driveway.
We would have liked to have had it directly off Highway seven, that, that just didn't happen.
That was first option.
That was our first option, but.
And did the state respond that they didn't want a public access entrance to the highway, even though it would be?
Have you ever dealt with minted?
They don't want any, they're, they're eliminating as many as they can. When I was at Chan Hessen, and Ms. Felsky can, she can attest this too, there was several farther down at Chan Hessen that they eliminated the access to Highway seven just in preparation for what's coming, so, I mean, they're.
They don't even like city roads.
Yeah, they don't like our city roads, they're going to eliminate a lot of them, but from what I understand, if they have their way, it's going to be frontage roads and stuff like that. So just to get a temporary work access there was pretty tough, so.
Okay, thank you.
Again, so I think, so, okay, next, real quick.
Oh, my question is for our education, because we feel like we definitely miss campaign. We are part of a Woodland Cove-based community. You give the newsletter, you said like all Woodland Cove residents were alerted April fourteenth, like what, that communication only?
You get it from the board, the FSR sent it out too about the town hall?
FSR sent what?
No. Yeah, yeah, it would have come from Karen. You get them when you sign up with your HOA?
You have to sign up.
Okay, so if you're not getting, you don't get any emails from FSR?
No.
Okay, so, they might go to your junk, yeah. No. Okay, so reach out to Karen at the HOA, and then you'll get on that list. It was also posted to the Facebook page for Woodland Cove, it was on the back of the water bills, it was in the Messenger, it was on the city's Facebook page. It's, it was everywhere.
So I think being new, you could give something back from all that wanted to be here. We're brand new to that area. We moved and built a home. There's a lot happening with realtors, with moving companies, with getting our mail in the first place was like three months past. So if there's any way you guys can further onboard or educate with HOA to be like, here's what we should be looking for and keeping up, like, it's really hard, like, we're busy people, full-time jobs, full-time kids.
So are we.
There's millions of school a day, so I just like, I don't want to miss anything. I don't know what I don't know, I don't know what emails I should be getting and what I shouldn't be getting, how to check up, so I think like.
Well, Allison, Allison, here's the thing, I have to, I'm going to have to differ with you. The city has made and bent over backwards in terms of communicating and with residents. There is some responsibility on the residents' part to also take some responsibility on that. Now, what I would say is, contact your HOA person and let them know that you need better communications, because we, we try our best, we have so much money for communications, and we, we do, as we, we have, we do all of this stuff, website, newsletter, email alerts, if you haven't done that, you should do that, check on our website, you can sign up for e-alerts. We do the town hall meetings, we do state-of-the-city addresses, again, just trying to reach out to our residents, and if there's something else that we should be doing that we're not, send us an email and let us know what that might be, because we, we have truly tried in the last number of years here to really reach out, and, and so, contact your HOA person, that would be the first step, and also sign up for our e-alerts, and check our website regularly. Jeff, quick.
We can't change what already happened, but my hope is that we really, as far as set up a meeting with the homeowners.
Right.
As soon as possible, to sit down and talk about the proactive solutions that have been mentioned tonight, which I think are really, really fruitful, and I appreciate everything that you do, and I share with them that I've got a relationship with you in the past on another development event.
Right.
You are very sensitive to homeowners, along with the other people in the council, so I want to thank you for that, on behalf of these homeowners and Gagne and Stonegate Builders.
Yep.
But also Jasper, we really, I'll be talking to Tyler tonight, and as soon as possible, set up that meeting, you have an internal meeting with the staff and, and discuss this and, and work to a solution that really works, that would be great.
We will do that.
I will, you can contact me and enjoy.
Yeah. Yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll do that. I know Jasper's real good about that, he's on it. All right. Thank you, and I'm, I'm certain, okay?
I just have three bars on the berm, but we'll take it to the offline meeting. I just, I don't know if you guys have seen the berm, but it's in my backyard, we moved in three months ago. I'll save you all my emotional story about why we chose it, but the berm's about six feet tall, so it, current state, won't cover the part, the cars in the parking lot, so, and we're taking away half the berm to create the new basin. So I just would really appreciate anything we can do to make that berm bigger. There's, there's some deciduous trees on the berm that won't do much in the winter, and there's four evergreens at the top of the berm, and, and two are dead, so.
And so what was your name again?
Kelly Aaron, four, six, five, four Wolfberry.
And our staff can talk to you about that, because that's.
Sure. We didn't, we didn't really have any say in the, the trees that got planted on the berm initially, so, but we knew that they were going to have to get removed, so we can put in there whatever we want now.
Like a forest? And I, I love screaming. I, I hear you. So I think, I think we'll come up with a, a solution that, that people can live with, really. I'm, I'm, our staff is really good.
I, I, I believe it. Thank you so much.
Thank you for being here. Thank you. And I do want to say thank you for coming, and I, I'm, I'm positive we'll be able to fi- figure this out to your satisfaction, so. With that, nobody else has signed up for any other issues, so with that, I think we'll move on to our consent agenda items. But again, thank you, folks, for coming, you can stay if you'd like, or you can leave, but feel free to stay. So our, our consent agenda items.
Yeah, yeah. We're doing good.
I can take it.
Or Jasper. Jasper.
Look into Gary, he can take care of it.
Thank you, Allison. All right. Are you folks here for some other reason?
I'm here.
There you go. All right. Well, thank you for staying, I appreciate that. So next we have a consent agenda, it's approve our work, are there any you wish to remove?
No.
Okay. Otherwise, it's approve our work session meeting minutes from June sixteenth, twenty-twenty-five. B is approve our city council regular meeting minutes from June sixteenth, twenty-twenty-five. C is approve our city council meeting minutes from July ninth, twenty-twenty-five. D is a resolution to approve claims. E is a resolution approving a setback variance at seventy-six, ten County Road fifteen. F is a resolution approving a setback variance at fifty-nine, sixty-two Hardscrabble Circle. G is a resolution authorizing execution of a previous pavement agreement at fifty-eight, oh, four Hardscrabble Circle. H is a resolution to accept resignation of Brett Hughes from our park commission and promote Carissa Gerring to park commission. And one more, a resolution to approve purchase of the replacement of street department two-ton dump truck. Any questions? Hearing none, do I have a motion to approve consent agenda items A through I?
So.
Oh, Brian, I think, Brian, I'll give that to you, Brian Eber and Kathleen Refkin seconded that. All those in favor signify with a "aye". All those opposed, motion passes. Gary, I just want to say thank you very much for your efforts on that dump truck and your recommendation to reuse the existing equipment. I thought that was very, very good, thank you very much for that. Good job. Business items, motion to approve a purchase of the Milo training system. Is that going to be Craig?
Yep.
All right. Thank you. I'm excited about this.
Me too. Madam, madam mayor and members of council, before you use a resolution to purchase the Milo training system, this is a follow-up from our work session where we had discussed the Milo and the benefits for us as a police department, as a city. Just to review some of it as we talked before, Milo is a multifaceted trading system that approves our interaction with both adult and juvenile offenders, as well as people in mental crisis, people with special needs, and people with diagnosis such as autism and PTSD. There are over a thousand scenarios that we can train on, and each scenario has different levels of complexity and difficulty. The system also helps officers with stress management during, both during and after calls. Besides the scenarios, the system can be used as an electronic range where we can practice our skill building and increase firearms proficiency without the expenses of ammunition and the hazardous cleanup of lead, among other things. The plan is for the system to be paid for using public safety grant money as well as DTF forfeiture money, and I'll stand for any questions.
Can we get a, once it's installed, can we use it, like, practice, you know, just kind of see how it works?
Yeah, I want to tour.
Absolutely. Once we get trained, I will send an email out, y'all can be the first to join.
I think this is great. Chief, can I ask you, how many other cities have this?
Off the top of my head, I'm not sure. I believe Champlin has it, and a couple training centers have it. There's different types of system like Milo. This is one of, of many different types, but I, I unfortunately can't tell you how many cities for certain have it.
I like where the money's coming from, but I'm wondering, like, could we share this with other cities?
We can, we can certainly look at a pay schedule to, to invite our partners in the area. I have no doubt that we would make some money on this. I might have to invite them in for free, and then they'll come back after that, and I'm sure, and pay. So, yes, we'll definitely be looking at that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good question.
So the annual cost is, I think, about forty-six hundred or something in there?
Well, it, it, correct, if we got the extended warranty, but without that, it's just electricity, and if something breaks, then we just pay it as it goes along, but other than that, there's no, Milo provides additional scenarios for free as, as they create them, so.
Oh, nice.
We're getting the extended warranty, correct?
Do you guys want us to get the extended warranty?
If we can rent it to other cities.
All right. One, one point of clarity, the, the funding mechanism will be the DTF money and then maybe some other, the public safety money, if, if that's available. We, we may tie this into the equipment certificate and use that money to pay that portion of the equipment certificate that we might sell, just because there's some accounting things going on with fund balance and things like that with the amount of the DTF money, so just for the future, we don't know, Brian and I are going to work through that as far as the budget goes, as we're doing the twenty-twenty-six budget, but that might be the funding mechanism, is to do an equipment certificate and then use the, some of the DTF money to pay that equipment certificate over five years. That makes sense. Otherwise, we could pay for it all, but then just be prepared that our fund balance will drop probably lower than what we feel.
The DTF money's in the general fund, is basically what Jeff was saying.
Thank you. That was easier, that was a lot faster.
So, that's why, so, you know, we're at, we're at thirty-nine point nine percent right now, and if we spend a hundred and, or a hundred thousand out of that, you'll see it drop down, so we might phase it in. It's up to, it's up to the group.
I, I think that's a good idea, especially if we can offset the annual costs with other, other departments participating and maybe paying a small fee or paying a fee of some sort, so. All right. Any other questions? Otherwise, is there a motion to approve the purchase of the Milo training system?
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Refkin, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Vickery, any other questions? Hearing none, motion to approve, all those in. in favor signify with aye. Aye. All those opposed, motion passes 5-0. So next, we have our security system quote and package approval.
Yes, I'll take this one, if that's all right. Madam Mayor and members of City Council. So after kind of a, a long process to, to figure out what we actually want, the direction that we got from City Council was to proceed with the, the system that was kind of pitched by Security 101. If you remember that day, I think we had a little, some thunderstorms going on. But, so that, that's the system. That's not the vendor. So there's other vendors that sell the components that Security 101. So I just want to make sure that's correct. They will no doubt provide a quote. And they're, 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 at this point in time, they are the most involved in knowing our system and things like that. So just, you know, just so a full disclosure. So there are three other vendors that have identified that in Minnesota that sell Breville, and I've reached out to them. One has responded, said they're probably interested in, in submitting a quote, but I'm a little skeptical just from the, the previous exercise with people coming in and then not providing any information. So I don't know if this is, I don't know if this is a big, too small a project, too big of a project. I don't know. It, it seems like it's hard to get some of these security firms to really, to, to, to figure this out for us. USA Security, the previous vendor, may look at doing something too, as they, I think, have access to Breville. You know, you might get a vendor, since we're going to put this on our website for the quote package, to say, hey, here's some comparable stuff. So if we get that, we'd have to do an evaluation. But I don't, I don't see that happening just from the, the feedback that I've received from other vendors, just as far as the price point.
Security 101 say that they would be, that they're interested in quoting it with the Breville?
Oh, definitely. Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. They're one of the ones, I mean, they're, they're the ones that, that's what they're going to quote, and they're, they're ready, they're basically ready to go. We've already gotten their quote.
Yeah.
But we're, so the idea is that we'll open this up if approved tonight. We gather quotes, I think I have in the quote package, until the Wednesday before the meeting on the fourth, and then I'll compile the quotes, and then on the fourth, we'll bring it back. And, and we can evaluate if we want to proceed with, with awarding that quote. I keep using quote because it doesn't meet the bidding threshold of 175. I did ask the question if, for whatever reason, tariffs, something else, the, the, the numbers go above 175, and that's, you know, our lowest quote number comes in at 180, we would then have to start the process over and then bid it. So just, so everybody's aware, that's something that might happen, may happen. I don't think it will, but it could if, if, for whatever reason, things outside of our control drive the prices up.
And they came out, and you guys saw, like, how the Breville cameras would work? Or did that little, like, walkthrough happen?
We, we did a demo. So the software, and it was virtual. So they had, they, they actually brought, and I don't know how many people were on that call. There was probably nine or 10 people.
At least, yeah.
Way overkill. They answered all of our questions. And, you know, Craig and I have had a lot of conversations about this. And, you know, the system that we originally pitched, the Vercata system, yeah, that would work, definitely. But, you know, this Breville system definitely will work too. And, but at the end of the day, well, yeah, it's a lot cheaper. And at the end of the day, it's, it's light years ahead of what we have right now. So it's all, it's all beneficial. So, you know, I think Craig, I, Gary, we're all on board with the system. It'll definitely be an enhancement. You know, same with the door access, we're going to.
We just have to get it.
Please have to get it if it's approved. So we're, we're all, we're all on board with it. And there's some definite enhancements to some of our utility infrastructure that should have some security that doesn't currently. So.
Excellent.
So what I'm looking for today is just authorize us to go out for quote package, and then report back at the August 4th meeting on the, the results of that.
Okay. And to approve a security system quote package, or for staff to go out and develop this and bring it back to the August 4th?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Vickery. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Refkin. Any further questions?
Thank you, guys, for doing all the hard work and all the meetings and reaching out to all the companies.
Thank you. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion passes 5-0. So next, hopefully, a quick one is the ordinance 500 amending section 200.01 of the city code regarding regular and special meetings.
Yes, Madam Mayor, members of council, this is based on just a conversation at the last work session about, mostly, we talked about starting the meetings at 6:30, but what this does is gives us the flexibility to start it when we want to. So, and there was a, Sarah Sensala had looked at this, and she cleaned up a couple other things that should be, should have been cleaned up. You know, it should be cleaned up as we go through these, or through the code. So there's four major points. If this ordinance is passed, we can start the meeting whenever we want, as long as we notice it correctly per open meeting law. We changed the requirement of having three members to call a special meeting.
I saw that.
Which is a violation of the open meeting law. So now it's just two plus the mayor. Or it's just two.
Or the mayor.
Yeah, or the mayor. So, so we're not in violation if we ever call a special meeting. Usually, the mayor has called those in the past if we need them. And then requiring the meeting to be moved to a Tuesday if it's on a holiday, we've
Changed that.
From time to time, went to a Wednesday. So it gives us the flexibility to, to move it to Wednesday if we want, per code. And then we added the, the stipulation about the closed, closed meeting per the open meeting law. So those four things. So, and just some
Pretty straightforward.
Yeah, pretty straightforward semantics of this. This wouldn't go into effect until after, seven days after it's published, which we would publish in the paper. So the earliest we could likely notice a meeting earlier, if you guys would like, would be the August 4th meeting. So if, if that's the case, if this is approved, you know, we would, we would start the work session at 5:00 and the regular meeting at 6:30.
Great.
Sounds good.
Good.
Any questions?
Nope.
All right. Then is our motion to approve the change to ordinance, let's see, ordinance 200.01 of the city code regarding regular and special meetings.
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Lacy. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Refkin. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes 5-0. So next, we have, so then, of course, because of that, we will have to make a motion to approve the amended city calendar for 2025, if we're going to start this in August. So is there a motion to approve the amended city calendar for 2025?
So moved.
Thank you. Brian Gervin, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Peter Vickery. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes 5-0. And then approve offer of employment for Paula Bowman as Assistant City Administrator. As you all know, we did have interviews and finalists, and we all unanimously agreed to offer the position to Ms. Bowman, and Jasper's been working on that. And I think he came to a positive conclusion, to a good solution, conclusion.
Yeah, I think everybody's excited, if approved, to, to have Paula come and work with us. Wanted to thank both City Council and staff for putting in quite a bit of time. You know, we've had quite a few meetings and interviews, and, and I think it was all for the benefit of really finding a good candidate. I was given some terms to negotiate with, and I believe that the offer fell within those terms. So happy to not have to come back and say, oh, we need this, or need that. So it was, it was great, and Paula was great to, to work with on that. So I did get some information, her potential, if approved tonight, start date would be August 25th, so it'd be a Monday. Nice, clean, right before, right after a meeting, but right before our next meeting. So it would work out well. So the offer letters in the, in the package, she would start off, or in the, in the package, she would start off at a step five. She does have roughly almost 25 years of, of public employment experience. So I think it was a appropriate place to place her. And then, and then some PTO in the bank, and then starting with nine years of service for PTO accrual purposes.
For PTO.
Yeah.
Sounds good. All right.
Did you guys discuss whether, does she anticipate her current city trying to match her to, the offer to retain her?
Yeah, so we did, and they didn't. So they, I think, I think, I think it was, it was more of a professional advancement than a, you know, I need more money situation. So at least, she, she signed the offer letter, so generally, if you do that, they're not, they're not countering.
And not being stopped in the grocery store. Bye.
Yeah.
Well, she can still be stopped, but she could say, I have no idea.
I don't want her anymore.
What we're looking for is just a simple motion to, to approve this, and then I can send Paula a text tonight and let her know everything is, is a go, and we can start the onboarding process.
Good. All right. Is there a motion to approve employment for Paula Bowman as our Assistant City Administrator? Thank you, Ms. Lacy. Is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Refkin. And I also want to thank Peter and Kathleen and staff for their extra meetings and extra time, because I know that it's, especially in the summer, that's, that's a lot. So thank you, thank you to you and staff as well. So all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes. Staff reports. Do we have staff reports?
There will for sure be a planning commission meeting, but it possibly is going to be another short one, based on some of the comments on our pending land use applications. We're still not sure whether we're actually going to have a review, and we're still working that out. So we do still have to have a meeting, though, to continue on the public.
Is this the, regarding that?
Correct. That would be the only item that is set for the, the meeting, though.
Okay.
Get someone if they're available.
I'm not counting. I will say the last one was really short.
Yeah. You could probably participate remotely, couldn't you? Could, could the council?
Yeah.
But then.
It's Monday, the 28th?
Yeah, 28th.
Twenty, what is it?
The one.
Just look at the calendar.
It'd be the 28th.
Yeah, the 28th.
On July?
Yeah.
July 28th. Okay, thank you.
Excellent.
All right. Any other staff reports? Craig, you sent out an email. So National Night Out, if any council member would like to participate, let him know, please, as soon as possible.
I will, just to that point, the newsletter that Amy sent out, that was awesome.
I will let her know. Thank you. Yeah, thank you. Yes, and, yeah, to that point, National Night Out's coming up. So if anybody would like to go out with an officer, it's, it's a great thing that we have 20 parties. Really says something about our city, but it's a bit of a mad dash in our, because we want to hit everyone and, and chat with everybody and get McGruff the Crime Dog out there and have a good time. So, thank you.
I'll be talking to you later on. So, so any other council or staff reports? Okay, so now we'll move on to council reports. So a couple things. Again, our fire partnership meeting was canceled, and primarily, it's due, they're trying to work out how to figure out the fire relief. It's the between pensions between the two organizations. And it's, it could potentially be very costly, and so they're just trying to figure this out. And it's taking a lot of time and a lot of people and a lot of input. So our meeting, which was scheduled for tomorrow, has been canceled. So we're going to see, it might, maybe we'll have a meeting in August. We're not sure. We're just going to wait and see. But that, that's kind of the, the, there's two kind of sticking points right now, and that one is the formula. We haven't decided on that yet. And then also this pension issue. So how we're going to merge the two. It's more complicated. And if you want more information, we could put together a, a more thorough report, maybe at a next work session or something like that, if you would like more information. Would you like more information?
Well, I just ask.
Oh, okay.
And I will happily answer any questions.
All right. And then, let's see, what else? Northwest League, there is none. We kind of take a break for a while for July and August. And then the regional council mayor's meeting, I haven't been to, and they had one today, but it's just impossible to go to that as well as have council meetings. And then I was going to ask Jasper, what do we have in our work session and next agenda? Do you have any idea?
Yeah, I do. There's a few things here. Give me a, I had it pulled up, and then I closed it.
One thing I should mention, too, I got a phone call from a resident and former mayor, Paul Pond, and he would like to have a meeting with myself and Rhonda regarding the Gillespie Center. And I just, and I know that I won't be able to do it before the next meeting. So if, I know we wanted to have another discussion on that, if we could have that at the second meeting in August.
So, so I'll answer the first question first. The other one's up to you guys. So we have wood edge road construction. So if you remember that, to give an update about the cost to pave all of wood edge, that resident came in. So we had that on there, that was back from April. And then Craig has a police workout on duty policy he'd like to talk to the group about. It's something that's starting to, or it's, it's occurring in a lot of other organizations. So he's drafted up something, I think, that is, you know, doesn't impact us much at all, if, if at all. But we, that's on there. And then the Bayside update for the stormwater thing that happened tonight, we'll provide something at that. Depending on the cost, too, you know, we might have something ready to put on the regular meeting agenda. It sounds like time is of the essence. So we can look at that. But we will probably have to, probably not, unless it really, it's really clear and easy. But we'll have to have some of those questions answered, like, you know, do you want this to be public infrastructure or private infrastructure? And if it's private, you know, if we contribute, we have to kind of make sure that that has a public purpose, you know, and then, you know, who maintains it into the future, is, you know, those types of things. So if it's public, then it's just us. We do all of that. And so keep that in mind if, when we, when we come to that point. So.
Initial budget discussion.
Oh, oh, add that in there. Okay. Initial budget discussion, too. So 2026 levy discussion.
We have to do it then? Can we do it in the second meeting?
We could do it either. I mean.
Do it the second. I won't be at the one on the fourth.
We could, yeah, usually, we've been able to get through it in, in one meeting or one or two, you know.
Initial one anyway, because you can always change it.
You've given us
Yeah, pretty good.
Direction as far as where we should fall with the levy, and I think.
It'd be better on the 18th.
I'll put it on the 18th.
Thank you.
For that.
Okay. Is everybody going to be at the meeting on the 18th? Because I think it'd be important that.
I am not going to be at the meeting on the 18th.
Where are you going to be?
I'm going to be at a family reunion.
Ooh. Why don't you, maybe just give us some high-level numbers at the 4th, and then we'll have, then we'll have another discussion on the 18th. Because I think it's important to get everybody's input.
Actually, I'll be, I'll attend the 18th, too.
Oh, no. Okay. So we'll do the discussion on the 4th, and then we'll kind of
I'll listen in.
We'll finalize it, we'll finalize it on the, or we'll kind of maybe go over it again on the 18th with that.
Are you here on the 18th? Because otherwise, we don't have a meeting.
I will miss September 3rd, so just in case you're thinking.
And, and I'll, I haven't, nobody knows this yet, but we did receive a request from the Gillespie Center, and that's kind of what Lisa's alluding to. At some point, we have to talk about that. So that's, we received that last week, I think, on Thursday. So the idea was to put it on potentially a work session or the regular meeting, or whatever the group directs me to do, as far as that, and the date is what I'm looking for.
May I, may I, Madam Mayor?
Of course.
May I, Jasper? I've been working on this for three years, and my butt off. And I don't think we need to talk about it at the work sessions, just me. But I'm, I'm, again, I'm a neophyte here. I kind of have my new revised piece to say quickly, for, you know, all due respect for everybody. I have my bullet points. I'd like to state them. I think Mr. Pond can write you a letter. I know you're so busy, Lisa. I mean, I, I know what you do for the city. I know how much time you put in. You are a public servant.
So you want it on the regular meeting on the 4th?
I want it on the regular meeting. Let's, the chips fall where they may. You know, if, if what I have to say resonates with the council, great. If it doesn't, I want it to be done. I'm done. We don't need to talk that much more. I mean, there's, I have the facts. I'll have them for you. I can say, state them quickly, and I don't know that we need to just keep going over this. I think it's really exhausting dragging this small ask on. So.
So who wants it? I mean, what, give me your input.
I won't be here, so I have no input on the 4th.
Would you want it on the 4th? Would you want it, and you're not going to be here on the 18th, so then when, you're not going to be here on the 3rd. So then you'd have to put it out.
Are you here the 4th?
I'm here the 4th.
Are you here the 4th? And you're here the 4th?
I'm here the 4th, yeah. So you want it on the regular meeting on, on August 4th?
Yeah. That's, I'm not here. I don't care.
Okay. Brian?
You have to nod in agreement or say no.
All right. Okay, then we'll do it on the 4th at the regular meeting. All right. And let's see. What else? Anything? Kathleen, do you have anything?
I attended the planning commission last month. We talked about the two variances
I attended the planning commission last month. We talked about the two variances that got approved and continued the Cardinal Cove project. That's all I've got. Oh, and I had the personnel committee, personnel committee met with candidates, Peter and I did that. Seems like so long ago.
At the, near Sarah Creek Watershed, we approved our budget for next year. And so our contribution's going to go up by $699.77, about $15,000. So that's about half a percent increase. And it's all related to the Hennepin County raising their cost of monitoring the rivers and streams and lakes. So it's a pretty modest increase.
It is, yeah.
And Peter, that comes out of the Stormwater Fund, is that right?
I don't know.
Oh, no.
Well, I think that's a general, is it?
It's a general. That's a general.
I think, actually, several years back, I think we switched it to come out of the Stormwater.
Oh, really? Oh, okay. I'm sorry.
I didn't know that.
Well, that four-hour meeting that I had, I learned a lot.
Why do you think Peter missed that meeting? No, just kidding. All right. Claudia, anything?
Oh, yes, just a very small thing. The Gillespie Center's facade has, you know, been completely redone. It's fabulous, and it has the brand-new giant logo that was just hung the other day. So if you're driving through Mon, please slow down and look at the building. It really is beautiful, and it looks spectacular. It's kind of got like new, instead of particle board, board and bat, and it's got these beautiful hearty shakes with a big new logo. So it's a beautiful addition to the community.
Are they getting a new sign?
Yes, and it's on the building. It's fabulous.
Oh, they're taking the electronic one?
That big. No, the electronic sign will, will be refurbished, but, you know, we're doing things in a very modest and economic way. But wait till you see the front of the building. Looks terrific.
Drive through Mon.
By the way, City Hall looks really beautiful. Really proud of it today, pulling up. Go ahead.
Nothing for me.
All right. With that, then, if there's a motion to adjourn, we can adjourn.
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Refkin. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Vickery. All those in favor signify with aye. Aye. All those opposed, motion passes 5-0. Have a good couple of weeks.
Thank you.
Be back here.
Paul, are you responsible for all the flowers, Mr.? Are you, Paul? Is that you? Are you responsible for all the beautiful flowers out front?